All right, welcome everybody out tonight to our September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting. Glad to have everybody. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate you bringing the good weather with you. If you will bow with me, we'll have a word of prayer before we go any further. Our Father in heaven, we're thankful for this day and the many blessings of life you've given us, Lord. We're thankful for the, for the beautiful weather, and we're thankful for the opportunity to gather here. We're thankful for the opportunity to live in this community, Lord. We just pray that you'll be with us and you'll lead us, guide us, direct us, forgive us all our many sins. Amen. All right, we have a set of minutes from, I'm gonna have to put my glasses on, that print's mighty small. August fifteenth. Y'all had a chance to look at those? All right, is there a second? All right, got a motion and a second to approve the August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Any comments, corrections? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Posed? All right. Chief, we got some more chairs back there. We got some folks come in.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, we're down to that portion of the meeting where we have public business and comment, not the public hearing yet, on the annexation or zoning, but public business. I know Mr. Dowd asked to address this, so you're, you're up.
Do I need to sign this up here?
Nah, you've, you've sent us word and that's good enough.
Yeah. Tim Dowd, representing Water County Historic. We were addressing the streetlights, and we still have one that's been disconnected, and that's right in front of the old candy store. It was physically disconnected, and it's on their building, so I can't do anything about it. But the rest of them, we've put them out, and thanks to Bob, I bought some big, what they call corn lights, from it, right up to the square, and the ones I got didn't fit, but he got two and put them up. And one's in front of the hardware store, and one's the very corner of the visionary design. So if you want to take a look at them, I think they're great, and the ones Bob got. So if there's any other concerns you have about those lights, so.
Okay. You need any action from us tonight?
No, that would be it. The only thing that I noticed that we're gonna have to, either one of us are gonna, City or Historic, the poles that are up now, they all don't have photo eyes, and they're staying on all day long, which causes them to burn quicker. So that's kind of to be addressed. The other issue is the square. I still haven't got anything back from, from stats to what, how much it's gonna cost. So when I do, I will let you know.
So this, moral of this story tonight, it's more to come?
More to come.
All right, well, we appreciate you working on it. All joking aside, we appreciate you working on it, and we get those things back up, perhaps in good shape. I neglected to say, when we started tonight, that we have at least two of our members that have to leave about six-thirty because of family matters, and so we're gonna move along here pretty quickly, and we may get to a point where we have to quit tonight, and either take it up next time, or take it up in some type of recess meeting. But I'll go ahead and say to you publicly, family comes first, and we understand that, and people who volunteer to serve in the community for no pay at all, better take good care of their families. And I think they do. So, all right, anybody else, some public business? I know we didn't have anybody on the sign-up sheet. Okay, before we go into, and I think I saw Christopher coming, yeah, he's back. Hang on a second, Christopher, I wanna bring y'all up to date on a couple of things, because it's pretty important. I have for you, in front of you there, we, if you'll recall, we got, have access to a million dollars from the federal government to be used for street paving. Obviously, that's not gonna do them all, but we have, I talked to a gentleman from Collier Engineering today, Chad Collier. They do most of the work for the county, and so they have a history. He also spent about twenty years of managing the roads in Davidson County. So he said he would be glad to have someone from his organization, either himself or somebody, come up and assess our roads, tell us where we thinks the, you know, we should start, what would be the most important, and what he's offered to do, I'm looking for it, but here it is. What he's offered to do, that four is two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars, is that what it says in there? So I think that's money be well spent. You know, we all know we got bad roads, but somebody's gonna have to say, he said, I can almost guarantee you, since you hadn't done anything in twenty-six years, some of them will have to be rebuilt, and others may be a little different. So, but I recommend that to you, so we can put him to work if we could.
Well, this right here, the square issue that some of us had brought up before, about how it's already kinda high and it's running off into businesses, will this take care of that?
Yeah, he'll, he'll assess that, but I'll be sure to pass that along, or I'll get, get y'all his email address, so you can send it out, your, your requests out to him. But I think this is a good way to start. You know, we're in a little bit of a conundrum in the fact that, I'm not sure we wanna pave any streets until we get the sewer project done, but they may have to go hand in hand. So if, if, if somebody would make a motion to approve that, I would appreciate it.
Might, I have one more question.
Yes.
The, I mean, what type of feedback, is this gonna be a detailed report, street by street, or what are we getting back from, from this, that we know?
I don't know that I asked that question about detail. He told me he would, he would ride, I think, doesn't it say he's covering ten or eleven miles?
Yeah, he's, he's ten miles.
Yeah, he asked me how many miles we had here, and that, as I recall, is somewhere between eleven and twelve, but a couple of those miles are alleys, and so the proposal's based on him riding the streets and telling us what he thinks, whether it be a detailed report or just, hey, here's what I think you ought to do, I'm willing to talk more, but it'll take more money, obviously. But I need somebody to oversee the, the job. I can't do it. So, all right, I had a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion? All right, here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed? All right, that carries, I appreciate that. The other update I'll give you is on the sewer project. Steve Jones, myself, and Dale Smith are meeting at nine o'clock Friday morning in my office to start the process of hopefully bidding this job out and getting it going. Steve did tell me he thought rather than go to the sewer revolving loan fund because of the time constrictions, we'd probably have to go to Tennessee municipal bond fund, but we'll talk about that Friday morning. I expect to have a proposal to bring to you in October, if not sooner, if I need to. I gotta look over here something to you. Just reach out and get me, Kyle. But it doesn't require any action tonight or anything. You see if there's anything else I need y'all to vote on real quick before we get into the zoning. I'm gonna jump around then, just so I can get a couple of things out of the way. The budget amendment ordinance that we approved on first reading in August, I need you to approve that on second reading, if you would, and that concludes the twenty-two, twenty-three process, budget process. Discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? The, I'll upgrade, update you on the urban growth boundary. We thought we had everything locked away, that everybody was in agreement, and then the city of Lebanon voted five to one not to approve, so we're kinda back in limbo right now. Don't know where the next step will be, but I thought we were done last month. We'll be back here at least for one more vote, most likely. Doesn't require any action tonight. Laura, you brought up the buzzer on the city hall. We've got a bid there, and it's pretty high. So there was an option given us. April, you remember what that option was? Put a door cam up, and we thought, think we can do that a little cheaper, but we'll explore that and make sure. But I didn't feel comfortable, this bid was two thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. That's almost as much as the guy's gonna give us opinion on the roads, you know, so. And I understand everybody's gotta make a living, but.
One comment, when you follow up on that, did that include like a, I got the impression because of the cost, that might include like a magnetic locking type system, so the door could be locked and unlocked from inside the building? Is that what that was? Or was it just a doorbell?
No, I think it was the buzzer, when she could push a button and unlock. That's what I.
To magnetically lock and unlock the door, okay.
I'm not.
But they weren't jumping up every time to go, like they're having to do right now.
Okay.
When they get up, they're just putting themselves in danger.
I'll send this out to you, where you can take a look at it for next time. This is the bid we got, so you can look at it and see what, what's in there. Okay. We had a request from Jennifer Folsom to use the farmer's market pavilion on March sixteenth of next year from ten a.m. to three p.m. for the two thousand twenty-four Tennessee Environmental Council tree-day pickup location. They did that last year, worked out very well. We told her we'd have to get that approved by the council, and I can certainly recommend that. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All right, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think that's about all of. I need, oh, no, we need to do the criminal trespass statute on second reading. That was the one we adopted. If you'll recall, state law has it there, but as it stands right now, you have to take the case to general sessions in Lebanon. If we approve this on second reading, we can hear it here in our city court. So I certainly recommend that to you as well. Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, you ready, Christopher, to do a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
On the proposed annexation and, and rezoning? Okay, we'll consider this then. We'll go into the council, there's a public hearing where people can comment on that, and then we'll go back in session.
What would you like me to do? Just read the public hearing notice, and then everybody will talk, and then we'll close the public hearing, and you all at the board can ask questions?
Yeah, kinda like we do in the county.
Public hearing, the Watertown City Council will meet Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six p.m. at Watertown City Hall to hear the first reading, application by Brian Keith, representing property owners Brandon Bass, Blake Bass, and Jason Turner, to annex and rezone property located on Lindwood Road, being Wilson County Tax Map one twenty-seven, parcel sixteen, containing approximately three point one eight acres. At the time of annexation, the property will automatically become R-one residentially low, low density. Therefore, the applicant is also requesting to rezone the property from R-one to R-two medium to high density residential to maintain the original intent. Anyone desiring to comment is requested to attend. And after we close the public hearing, I'd be happy to answer any questions that come up.
All right. So we're in the public hearing now. Anybody that would like to comment? I know some people have commented before, and they're welcome to comment again. All right, Ms. London, we got your letter, by the way.
Oh, did you?
Uh-huh.
I hope everyone had a chance to read it and consider our concerns. I have some of the neighbors here who have had damage because of the storage unit blasting. Some couldn't be here tonight because of other appointments and things. But first, I want to start out with the safety issue. Less than a week ago, six o'clock in the morning, everyone was awakened in the community because of a wreck at Lindwood Road. Traffic was backed up past the railroad track, and people thought they could go around the industrial part and miss whatever was holding up the traffic. They got stuck on Lindwood Road with nowhere to go. It's, it's getting worse and worse every day. The country road was not built to take care of all the traffic we have there now. But another concern that has come to my attention is, in this unit, not only will we have at least forty or more cars added to the traffic, we will have students waiting for school buses, and there will have to be a school bus stop there. It's either going to be at the end of the curb, going up the hill, or it'll have to be at the top of the hill where there's a blind spot, and people coming across either way. When they get up there and see that stop sign out, what happens? Another thing, the water, when it rains now, when they remove those few inches of top soil and get to solid rock and start having to blice, and then they wind up with nothing but concrete, rock, and asphalt, all of that rainwater has to go somewhere, and it's going to go down on the Judkins property, first of all. They're going to be flooded, then it's going to go into that curb. You'll have poaching, you'll have hydroplaning, winter, you'll have ice. If you can't get a picture in your head of what could happen or what is happening with all that rock, go up to Radlic Church and go behind to those apartments built up there, and nothing but solid rock, and all that rainwater goes across the road into the neighbors. And then the damage to our property, we had all the damage from the storage building blasting. Now, if we have the property on Sparta Pike, Miss Eddie Phillips's property, as I know it, those apartments or whatever they're building there, and then we have the ones on Lindwood Road, we're right in the middle, and we're going to get a double whammy from all of it. So I don't want to take up all the time for somebody else, but I do want you to consider the things that you've already read, and just to wrap up of what I'm saying tonight, and please help us out.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Others?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity just to speak to you today. I, I think, I understand our desire to, to grow. I think that's coming our way. I think we understand that, and I think we need to grow. This is a wonderful little town, a wonderful community, and, and we, we love it here. I, you know, I'd rather not have a, a whole lot of people that are right around me. I like being able not to have to shut, shut my curtains on my, in my house, and that sort of thing, but I love our community. I just want to make sure that we control what we have coming, and I, I, I think that having some sort of housing unit there is not such a bad thing, if, if it can be done without blasting and tearing up everyone else's homes. But I also think that we don't want a lot, we don't need a lot of apartments right in that location. I don't think that the infrastructure can handle that. So I would just ask that you consider what type of units that we want to put into there. If you're going to approve to bring it into the city, I know that makes it a lot more palatable to someone who wants to come in and to develop it, if it is in the city, there's, because you can provide so many things that the county can't. But it impacts so many people, and what it does to the people, so please consider what, what you're asking to, to come in. I, I think it would be better to approve some sort of plan, because we've seen nothing, except that we're gonna come back and do this later. We haven't heard from the owners of the property of a development, or a builder that says, here's what we propose to do. And I just would rather that we kinda think this through. I, I've always been taught to, taught to trust, but verify, and so I think we should verify what the intent is and what we actually are going to see coming in their way. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Others?
Yes, I'm Sandy Hooper, and I live on the, the corner there. I live right beside the clinic, so my house would be affected, and whenever they did build those storage units, we had a lot of damage. My ceiling is still damaged, and it hasn't been fixed. The home, I mean, it felt like your whole home was just being, I mean, gonna just sink because of the blasting. But not only that, I mean, that's, that's our home, and then we've been there, you know, and that's our backyard, you know, and, and, and it's peaceful, and it's quiet, and it's been like that. You know, Watertown is, you know, a, a community, you know, to where we've all, you know, come together and everything, but we've been there for a long time, and trying to build those back there, I mean, I, it, the safety issue is the storage units really did not, you know, do justice for us there. But the traffic and, and everything like Ms. Sue was saying, it, it is gonna affect everything. It's gonna affect our backyard. It's like, it's gonna take away our backyard, and we're not gonna be able to have peace and be able to enjoy our homes. So I, I, you know, stand, you know, and, and ask that, that y'all consider that, you know, to, for, you know, not to go through.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Others? Yes, sir. Mr. Beard?
I'm Robert Beard, and I'm still standing, representing the church at Al Chapel, and I just wanna remind you that when they was putting the storage buildings in, there, they had a, a meter, I guess, they're supposed to measure the blasting over there, and they said, didn't get enough to do anything, but we just did a little over two hundred thousand dollars for renovations, and we got blasted damage when they, when they did the storage buildings there. And, and I know for sure when they put water lines and stuff through, it's solid rock all the way through there. So there's no way to do what they're gonna do without blasting. And another issue I wanna bring up, like I said, the safety issue of, of that type being so close to the church. If you remember, back on July the twenty-first, a lady was killed at the, in the projects in Lebanon. Well, three of our members happened to be her grandchildren, and, and I know from living in public housing, no matter how good you try to be, you can't get along with everybody. And if, if somebody shoots a bullet, I don't care if you shoot it straight up in the air, it's gotta come down somewhere. And, and, and that, and, and the noise that, that it would create, you know, doing church and everything, I just still don't think it would be a good fit for us. Plus, plus the traffic is gonna have to come out almost right in front of the church at the top of the hill or somewhere. But just the other day, I just, I'm a half a mile over the road, and one morning, about time for school traffic to start, counted over seventy cars coming, trying to get out on the highway off Lindwood Road. And it's that way in the morning, and then when school lets out in the evening, it's that way, and you, and of course, you know how young people are. You got people speeding and all up, up and down through there. And, and I'm sure you can check with your women department, that we've had several accidents down through there as it is, and I just don't think it would be a good fit right in front of our church.
Thank you, sir. Others? Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, I, I think this meeting and previous meetings, we've discussed a lot of these things, and, and I don't know if you can tell, but even though everyone's very calm and very professional, there's a lot of emotion around this issue. In past meetings, we've discussed the fact that from Roberts Road to Sparta Pike, the road is so narrow that very often you have to have one vehicle pull off to the side in order for another, particularly guys like us who have the trucks with the big mirrors on the side of them. You have to be very careful. That traffic is gonna cause a problem, not just at the intersection of Sparta Pike, but all the way up to Roberts Road, as people wanna go from the direction down here, up through the Lindwood exit onto forty going east. The second port is water pressure. Many of the houses that are on Lindwood Road already have to have supplemental pump houses. Many of the houses that are on Linwood Road already have to have supplemental pump houses because they can't get adequate water pressure up to their homes. Adding this multifamily units is going to detract water pressure from the main line that comes off of Sparta Pike, and is going to further reduce the available water pressure for the individual homes that are further up Linwood. Third, the Department of Justice has clearly shown that multifamily housing units bring with it increased crime, whether it's simple crime, vandalism, bikes being stolen, whatever it is, or more serious crimes, drugs, assaults, whatever those are. We have an incredibly safe environment here. And this project threatens the safety of not only the people that live right there, but anyone who's within distance of that area. The next one is culture. I don't know if everyone, I'm sure everybody, we've only been around here for twenty years, but those of you who are lifelong residents of Watertown know that the Dowell Chapel area is an incredibly close-knit community up there. But what I don't know if you know is that that community goes back to the days after the Civil War, when free blacks were first settled in the area, because it was in close walking distance to the only black school, which by the way, just happens to have been located on the other piece of property we're discussing, that was within walking distance for the...
What other piece of property?
The other, there was a piece of property on Sparta Pike that...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, that's actually where the black school was once, many, many years ago.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, all right. So that community there has an identity. Think about that. And if you take that identity and you plop down right in the middle of that community, this multifamily unit, it is absolutely, positively going to destroy the identity of that very close-knit community. Don't underestimate that. Finally, there's this. The vast majority of people who stand in opposition to this aren't your constituents.
Maybe it's correct.
Watertown City Council, and we're not your constituents. But this is where our children go to school. This is where we go to worship. This is where we shop. This is where we socialize. We are a part of your community. And though we don't get a vote in this thing, we would ask that you remember that we are your neighbors. You can annex this, and we can promote growth and profit and whatever other things are behind all of this. Everyone here has made their points, but nothing is more important than remembering that the people from here, as far up Linwood as you want to go, ought to be considered as much a neighbor as the people who are inside the current city limits. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Others? Others?
I know y'all are getting tired of hearing from me, because I'm here at every...
You don't think we're going to agree with that, do you?
I know, I get on y'all's nerves, but my name is Doty Judkins, and I live right there on the property, right there. The rock wall is what's dividing me from them. And my main concern is not only with the growth that's going to be happening, it's like they pointed out, the crime. The travel issue is already a problem, period. It's already bad. It's like they pointed out too, the other day, there was a bad wreck. Somebody got hurt, you know, in a car wreck, trying to pull off to go to school or go to work. I mean, and they speed. If y'all want to build all that, y'all need to have more security around through there. And I know for a fact that right there in front of my house, y'all have one of those little digital things that shows every time a car pulls up and down the drive or the road. Y'all see how much traffic is right there.
That's not ours, that's a county.
Well, I'm just saying, y'all can look into that.
Yeah, oh, sure. We can have access to it. You keep saying "y'alls."
No, I'm just a country girl, okay? Y'all is everybody, okay?
I understand, we're from the South.
But, okay, but what I'm saying is too, I mean, the tractor trailers, y'all, is still a big issue. They not only go down the industrial park, but they go up the road, they go down the road. And then we've got Amazon, and we've got Spectrum, and we've got all those other delivery people, UPS. I mean, and then, it's just a lot. And I've also heard rumors about people going to come in there and widen the streets. Well, that ain't going to help nothing. All that's going to do is take away from us more.
It's going to take away from our land.
It's going to take away from our property, our land, and then we still going to have to pay taxes on everything. So, I mean, it's a lot, y'all. And I cannot, I've told y'all this over and over again, I cannot even let my green kids play out in the front yard. I can't, because the truck drivers and all them racing cars go up and down the street, and you can see black marks where they're all just spinning tires everywhere. I mean, it is a big mess, y'all. And there's a lot that we need to consider. I mean, I'm like them, understand, we've got to have growth. But we are getting that growth with that last bit that we just talked about a while ago, with that big apartment complex coming in over there, right across the street from Beach Long Road. It's a lot, and that's going to make even more traffic. That's going to put even more kids in danger. I thought, my daughter thought, and if I hadn't been watching out the window and saw what was happening, we thought she was going to get kidnapped from one of them truck drivers just because she wanted to take a walk down the road. She wanted to walk down to the movie theater and come back just to get some exercise. By the time she got to the end of that stop sign, right there, right in front of my house, that truck driver done jumped over in the passenger seat, opened the door, and she run through that yard of that new building that was just built across the street. And I opened my front door, and he took off.
And I appreciate that, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but it doesn't have anything to do with the issues in front of us.
No, I'm just telling y'all, I mean...
I know, I understand, but I mean, I've made a list here of things that people have talked about.
It's a lot of crime already picking up. And then, there's a lot more buildings being built, and that means more crime, more devastation, more, and that ain't even got nothing to do with when they go and start dynamiting and stuff. They go over there and they start dynamiting. When they was making the movie theater across the street, a big old rock fell through the roof of my house. Have they got insurance and stuff to take care of all that? My homeowners won't pay for it, because it's not my fault. Nothing I did. What kind of insurance do they have? Are they going to be able to provide all that information? And where are the people? I've never seen not one of them people here.
They're sitting back here, behind you. Yeah, they're back there.
Can y'all tell us what kind of homeowners, or what kind of insurance and stuff y'all got? Can y'all come up and speak and let us know and stuff?
They'll get a chance to speak.
We are not comfortable with this at all, y'all. This is our home. We moved to the country to get out of...
All right, you need to address us now. Where are the people going to make the decision?
Well, we moved out here to get away from all this growth and all that. And like I said, I know it's going to happen, but it don't have to be the way that it is. It's just too much in that one little area right there. You've got to think too, that all these people's families that's already passed away, like Mr. Franklin and all them, their farms have been auctioned off into lots, all of them. So that's all these houses that's being brought in and built, and that's even more traffic added to our road. I mean, I don't know what else I can say, other than just, please, y'all, please. Like I said, I can't even go out in my front yard. I can't let my kids, I can't let my green kids, I can't even let my dog out in the front yard. It's awful. It's horrible, and it breaks my heart. And it's breaking my heart even more that we're having to do all of this just to try to keep peace around our home.
And Ms. Judkins, I think that we, I mean, I know I've heard you, and I think, you know, all of us have, I would like to hear what the other people say. And if we have to vote on this tonight, we've got two people that are needing to go, so...
Okay, I'll shut up.
You know, I adore you, and I adore your kids, but I want to hear what they say in case we do have to vote tonight.
I understand, and I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, no, no.
I've just got a lot on my mind.
I understand. It's a big decision, yes.
And my kids' and my green kids' future.
Right. I get it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Okay, you good, pal, you good? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Tom, if you'll give us your recommendation, then we'll hear from the applicants. Or do we hear from the applicants first, what happens? I'll call you, Tom.
You did.
Christopher, I'm sorry.
This request is for an annexation again. Annexations come into R1. The applicant was originally appealing to come in as RM2. They have dropped that particular part, so the only thing in front of you tonight would be the annexation, and they would come in as standard R1 rezoning, which is the residential. This comes before you from Watertown Planning Commission with a negative recommendation of a 3-2 vote against the R1 zone district in Watertown. At current, if come in, would allow thirteen residential, single-family residential lots via Watertown zoning standards on the particular lot. To address some of the concerns, I won't be able to address all of them. The Linwood Road is a county road, and I don't foresee the county allowing that portion of it to be annexed into Watertown, especially since the east side of it is still in county property. So the minimum road standard would probably require a widening of Linwood Road to the entire frontage, and it could, depending on the lot count, require a center turn lane to be extended, kind of what you see at the storage units. And that would have to be done on the applicant's property, that would come out of theirs or the right of way. The existing water issue on the property, unless the Water Authority released its service rights, would be served by the wastewater authority. The sewer would most likely come from Watertown, and they would be required for infrastructure improvements, which, if the annexation is approved, I have a resolution that I've written up for a terms of service as well, which will address that if it gets that far. I don't want to bring it up if it's not.
R1 in the city number of lots versus R1 in the county number of lots.
Well, it's currently A1 in the county. Our current standard is eighty thousand square feet, which is 1.83, eight-six acres.
Okay.
And they've got 3.1, so they'd only be allowed one. They don't have enough for two. R1 in the city is 7,500 square feet lots, and if you subtract out infrastructure needs that they would need for that, that roughly gets them thirteen lots.
So it's one versus thirteen.
Yeah. Watertown is five and three-quarter units per acre in the R1 district. If that kind of clarifies that.
Questions, Christopher. All right.
So we're dropping, they're dropping from R1 to S1.
Correct, they're not requesting a rezoning, they're just requesting annexation.
Which would allow them to build thirteen homes?
Thirteen single-family homes, yes, sir. There's no multifamily allowed in the R1 district in Watertown.
And what, in the county, like, if we were not to pass this, can the county come back and say, but we are going to? But they can only get one unit, is that what you're saying?
Right, the property allowed in the county would be allowed one single-family home, and it's...
We have to approve this more than have thirteen.
Yes, ma'am. They could put a duplex on the property via county regulations, so I guess in essence they could get two units, but that would be the max per county regulation.
So we're going from thirty to thirteen? Well, originally, they think of them at thirty.
Thirty. Oh, yeah, there's a, there's a maximum capacity of thirty-three. I don't believe the property would support that. I mean, there is a possibility, I just don't think. Their original request was for twenty-one units was their master plan, but they, they're not, they're withdrawing that part of the request.
Just to clarify, the request has, the original request was to annex and rezon.
Correct, yes, sir.
And it's just been changed to just be annexation.
Yes, sir.
As the default of R1.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, Christopher. Now, it's up to us now. We know how you feel.
Now, I was just curious, because that's only three acres over there, and they're willing to put thirteen or thirty-one or whatever.
They can do it. They can do it if it's R1.
That's going to lay, what, this room?
Ma'am, 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 you're preaching to the choir. If you'll go up Brixton Avenue right now, there's two houses sitting right on top of each other, because it's 7,500 square foot lots, which is ridiculous, but that's what we got right now.
And you've got three members of this council that live on Brixton.
Pass it every night.
They have to drive by it every day.
And I think it's an ISO, but it's within the law. Mr. Keith, you speaking, or who's speaking for the applicant?
You're all done, for the time being.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just wanted to come up here and say that, I mean, we're going to do everything we can to, I mean, we don't even know if we're going to be blasting or not. I mean, it's just, I mean, probably rocks on most of it, but, I mean, everybody, we got insurance, we, all that stuff, we spend a bunch of money to get insurance, come check everybody's houses and all that stuff for anything like that happens. I mean, so, I just want, we don't even know what will be done, so we don't know if we'll blast or not. But right now, we're just looking to get it re, you know, put in, but we'll have to widen roads or whatever needs to be done, but we're not to that point yet, so we're just now asking for, to get it annexed in.
All right. Any of the other applicants, or Mr. Keith, you go?
Brian Keith, KNA survey, and I'm helping the applicants to work through this. So I just want to, I want to cover a few of the issues that was brought up, but first I want to say to you guys that what we're asking for is an annexation into Watertown. We're not asking for any number of buildings. We're not asking for any infrastructure whatsoever. All the, all the issues that have been raised tonight are legitimate issues. This crowd behind me, I probably got a target on my back, but this crowd behind me has got legitimate issues if we were at that point in the process. So what I'm trying to explain here is, what we're asking for tonight does not represent anything that's being discussed. It's an annexation into the city of Watertown to give...
Everybody, now, we've had a public hearing, that's how from Curtis.
I've never lied to a council or a planning commission in my life, I'm not starting now. The annexation gives these folks an opportunity and gives them some different avenues. We're not talking about any type of building right now. The city of Watertown will have every opportunity to review, talk about, and turn down anything that was going to be built on this property. This is the way it works everywhere. I've been doing this a long time. That's how it works everywhere. You have an opportunity to turn it down at a different time. You could turn down anything that was brought... That's how it works everywhere. You have an opportunity to turn it down at a, at a different time. There, you could turn down anything that was brought before you. What we're here tonight to do is to try to get an annexation for a piece of property that otherwise is, is basically useless. One structure on a piece of property that has no soil is not feasible for anybody. You, you couldn't do anything with it. It's just gonna sit there. By annexing it into the city, it gives them options to look at, plan on, and then come back before the city with those, with those type submittals, okay? Having said that, I will address a few of the issues just because they've been brought up. I don't think they pertain to this, but I, I want to address them.
Don't want to cut you off and let you talk as long as you want to, but we're gonna wind up having to defer this because we got two people with family issues that are already running fifteen minutes late. But I will say this.
Okay, well.
No, but, but hang on a second, let me say this. I don't want to cut anybody off and when we get ready to vote on this, you'll still be able to speak, uh, because of this, but we've had a public hearing at the planning commission and we've had two public hearings now. I think the people around this table know how the people out there feel and we know what the applicants want to do, so we're not gonna have another public hearing if we defer it tonight. But we'll have Christopher give his recommendation and we'll have, the applicant, the applicant always gets a right to, to address the body that's voting on it. But, you know, unless these folks can stay, we're gonna have to defer it, I think. That's up, that's up to y'all.
Well, I.
Alright, alright.
I, I, I'll just, I'll just end, I'll just end.
But I don't want to cut you off.
No, no, I'll just end with this. I won't go through all that, um, for the, for the sake of time.
I think we know what, what, what the issue is.
Yeah, well.
Um, I do have a question. I thought, it was my understanding that once we voted to annex it, that then it's, it's done, like, you can build thirteen. I've been up here for three years now and that has happened before and I was told then, and I may be wrong, but I was told then that we don't have a say-so in what goes on there. But, again, I may be wrong. If, you can comment on that.
After annexation, the city council will not see it again. It would still have to go before the planning commission, apply for, maybe subdivision regulations. But, for any number of reasons, whether it be, you don't feel like the infrastructure is there, um, the water pressure, the water authority comes and says, hey, we can't serve anything without a good reason for denial. It would be a litany of things for the denial of class. Maybe it comes from the planning commission.
And they failed that three to two, like, another not, right?
It must've been a while, a couple of months ago. Yes.
The planning commission did not pass this annexation.
Or resumings, the planning commission makes recommendations.
Right.
They made a negative recommendation with a three-two vote. They do not approve or deny or resign.
Correct, correct.
But they did.
They did not approve the recommendation.
Five commission board, there were three noes and two yeses.
Was that the recommendation for annexation or the recommendation for R2? What was proposed to them?
It was the recommendation. They grouped it into one at that time, so it was a recommendation for no for the annexation in R2 zone. Um, I can't tell you how it went out. It was just the R1, that was on the request before we board that. Is that answered? Clear, brother?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I just, I'll just end with, unless there's another question for me, I'd be more happy to answer, but I'll just end with one statement. I just didn't want you guys to make your decision based on information that's not relevant to what we're, what we're talking about. It's the only thing I was trying to make my point to. I understand what's being said is true, but not at this point. We're, we're not there and Watertown will still have the final say whether one thing gets built or another thing gets built. This is just giving the owners an option to explore different avenues and I just wanted to make that point. Thank you. Alright.
May I at least make one statement?
No ma'am. No ma'am. We've had a public hearing. We've had three. You've spoken three times. Not trying to be ugly to you, but the decision has, has got to be made.
Resumings also have to be through two readings.
It has to be for, yeah. But tonight is the annexation.
Well, it's the first reading.
And it'll take, it'll take two readings.
Yes sir.
Alright, if we get past the first.
Yes.
Alright. Alright, what's the pleasure of the council? Now, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude.
I understand.
What's, what's the pleasure of the council?
So, if we annex this, then basically they will build, build thirteen houses as in, because as long as they permit it's fully available, build thirteen structures.
Yes. That's the way I understand it.
They have to bring it before the planning commission?
Have to bring the site plan.
It doesn't have to come before us anymore. It goes before the planning commission from here on if we, if we approve it.
But this is first reading tonight.
Okay. So, what are you needing from?
I need a motion to either, uh, approve or not approve.
I make a motion not to approve.
Not to approve.
What, what was your motion?
Not to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
Alright, got a motion and a second to disapprove. Discussion among council members. Kate, hearing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor of not approving the proposed annexation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now, let me, let me, let me ask, let me say something to you, okay? We appreciate the way you presented yourself. These folks back here are our neighbors too and it's not a war, okay? Uh, so let's have a little respect for them and, uh, alright, that's, let's y'all, you got anything you want to bring before? No, I think we're good, Kayla, but do you have anything you want to bring up?
No sir.
I got one thing. Police department, who's here for the police department?
Uh, chief and assistant chief, yeah.
Three weeks ago, I called the police department. A little girl was locked in a car on my street. It was really hot. I called the police department and nobody answered. I called the city hall and nobody answered. I had to call eleven, uh, nine-one-one to get, to get somebody up there, but meantime, this lady was about to have a hemorrhage. Her little girl, about less than two years old and, and, uh, I couldn't get the door open and she finally somehow got it open. And I'd like to make this statement. I don't want to ever have to lie while I'm on the city board to call the police and can't get a hold of them in Watertown. I don't know the problem and I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody, but I don't want to ever have to do that again with emergencies.
The problem is we don't have a dispatcher.
Okay.
If there's not a dispatcher there.
But you got a personal phone called Hill, I said, each one of.
There's not a, we've gone, we've gone through this before. If you'll dial, it should go to the sheriff's office and they'll dispatch somebody immediately.
It did not.
Well, if it didn't, I don't know why it didn't, but that's what the system is set up to do.
It says that you always carry a personal phone with you and he perches them the way I understood you. And I couldn't get a hold of the police. I don't want to have to ever do that again and that little girl could have died in that car, as loud as it was.
Well, if it's an emergency, if you'll dial nine-one-one, it'll go straight to nine-one-one and they'll dispatch immediately anyway. Nine-one-one's got nothing to do with the police department or the city hall.
I couldn't get a hold of you and I cried.
I've done it before, getting the police.
You good?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move on then. Y'all, I appreciate y'all showing up, giving of your time and y'all go take care of your families now. Don't get me in trouble with them, alright? Okay, we're ready to, for reports. The police are up first tonight, so. Oh, and I tell you that, y'all have been here pretty much.
Yeah.
You could have killed. You're welcome. I want y'all to know, I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege here. You stand right here. Me and this girl right here were voted the most likely to succeed in nineteen seventy-two. And she did it and I'm working forty years at a job that don't pay a dime, so you tell me which one of them succeeded. They can appeal to chance report.
I don't, I don't understand that.
Yeah. I'm sorry. They, no, 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 they appealed to chance report. We're done. We're done. They'd have to do that within sixty days. Okay, alright. Alright, chief, you're on. Alright, we're trying to get to our families too, so that we want to get done.
Basically, we had two hundred and thirty calls this month. Uh, we drove four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine miles. So, I think this'll say we've been very active. Uh, one other thing too, we didn't, I'm not sure if y'all went over, I know you did the trespassing. What about the vicious dog? Did we do it on a second time or?
Well, no, we were gonna do it, but y'all never sent me an ordinance. I didn't have anything to distribute.
Yes, I'm listening.
Okay, we'll do it next time. We've, we've approved.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something that we had to, that slipped through.
Well, I'm not sure, but we'll close the crack up and deal with it next time. How about that?
It was in minutes that we had the first reading last time.
We did, so it was to come, but we didn't have an ordinance last time. They were supposed to put us one together. So, anyway, we'll take care of it in October.
Okay.
Questions of the chief? Alright.
Huh? You're gonna see him at night. Night, night to light up great. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Uh, next was going to be Dale Smith. He asked to be excused tonight, but wanted to tell y'all that he did not have anything to bring in front of you. He will be in that meeting Friday that I mentioned earlier. And fire report, Nathan? Got a, got a new, have you been here before?
Yes sir.
Alright, it's your maiden voyage?
Yeah.
Okay, well, Blake Hahn is asked to be excused tonight. His eighth grade daughter was in the eighth, in the, uh, ceremony, eighth grade night and I said, go. He said, I'll hustle and get here. I said, no, it means something, that girl, you go.
Well, mayor, councilman, uh, this month we responded to forty-two calls, twenty-one were in the city, twenty-one in the county. Um, I think it was thirty-four meds, three MVAs, fire, five fire-related. Um, I do want to report that Engine Twenty-One is back from repair and pump, uh, the pump passed service. Uh, so it's back in service and we're happy about that. Um, upcoming events, we've got a mile-long yard sale we're real excited about. We'll be staffed for that. That's also our fish fry day, so I appreciate all y'all that come out to that and look forward to seeing you guys there too, so, uh, does anyone have any questions?
What day is that on the fish fry?
Uh, the seventh.
Yep.
Yeah, got fish, barbecue? Yeah, so, any questions?
Any questions? We appreciate you coming in and standing in for Blake.
Great to be here.
Alright, appreciate the work you do too. Alright, that's got the reports out of the way. Uh, I was just gonna tell you, we've had some of the Zumba classes here. We have gotten the waivers signed. We have gotten the insurance. We've gotten everything y'all asked for and they've had three or four classes here. And, uh, I'm, I'm told that they are discriminatory classes. They're only for women. And, uh, men can't, can't come to them and, uh, not, not that you're gonna catch me in here, but that, uh, but anyway, I think it's working well, but we'll continue to watch.
And I was gonna say, everything appears to be good when they leave and all that. I mean, what I see, yes, but when y'all come in the next day?
We think so.
Does it appear to be okay?
Your table there has got a little swag in the middle of it.
I think it was already swagged.
Was it? Okay, we wondered about that.
No, it's already.
Alright, we'll see if we can't get you an unswagged table before next time. Alright, no, I think everything's been going well. Um, our budget report this time is not, nothing unusual, but if you look at it, you'll see more, uh, more expenditures in September than there were revenues. That's not unusual because we have no property taxes that come in until October through February, so the first three months of the year are customarily that way. That's the reason you built up, build up savings so you can, uh, carry you through, so nothing alarming there. If it stays that way in about two months, I'll be alarmed.
Quick question on that.
Sure.
There's a new sub-account in the water sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Laid with land, I'm assuming that is, uh, easements to pay for?
Yeah, I didn't even see that. I, I didn't read that closely, to be honest with you.
Right, it just said land. It didn't say easements.
Should, should have said twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, right, about twenty thousand dollars.
That's it. That's it. Um, I, I also promised you last time, and this was on me, that we'd discuss the fireworks ordinance and I didn't get a chance to do that, so I apologize. I'll have that for you in October. Um, and something we need to think about. From time to time, we get requests to use the city park. And we want it to be used. And when I say be used for, um, churches use it, have birthday parties over here. But occasionally, somebody will say, we want to raise money for something over here. And I don't think it's fair to use city property to raise money off of. So, we need to take a look at that because sometimes the effort to raise money may be for something just to raise money and otherwise it may be somebody that's fallen on hard times like a house fire or something. So, Bob Morgan and I were talking about it, I guess, late last week. And we need to think about what to do on that. How, how do we differentiate? How do we define, you know, we'll do it for nothing here as opposed to if you're gonna use it a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars. We do have a rule that if you're gonna have ballgames or tournaments and you use the lights, I think we pay, uh, for the lights, they pay a hundred dollars a night per field. So, that's in place, so, uh, that's something to be thinking about if you would, how to do it, because we, we have a lot of people that want to help. You know, they're not, they're good people. Everybody here is good people. And if somebody has a, has a misfortune or, you know, a serious illness, uh, a house fire or, uh, something, others spring into action and say, we want to use the park to raise money. In my opinion, we don't want to stop that. But, we don't need that to be abused either. And I'm not saying anybody is, but we need to put something in place so that we know it's not abused as best we can, so. Yes, sir. Can we get input from the Parks and Rec Board as to what their opinions are? We could. They hadn't met in years, so. Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize we had one until last week. Yeah, well, we had had one in quite some time, but. That's a moot point. It's on the books, but, uh, you know, I think we can make that decision, but, um, just think about that. Ask around, what people, you know, all of us are out in town, see what people think. Uh, and in the meantime, I've got a request, uh, I think I'm going to, so as not to delay them, is to say you can use it for nothing so long as you don't have to use the lights. If you use the lights, you gotta pay. Because it doesn't cost us anything for people to come over here and play at the park and as long as they clean up and, you know, if y'all are over here early in the morning or late in the afternoon, you see a lot of people over here walking and running. And, uh, it's, it's a good thing to have. They don't have to go somewhere else and do it and don't have to walk in the street, so. But anyway, I've, I've said enough about that for tonight. Chief, what are you, assistant chief, lieutenant?
Firefighter.
Firefighter, honey, that reminded us of the mile-long yard sale and the fish fry. And, um, our next meeting will be October seventeenth. I want to say something on that, uh, day, that, November seventh day. We've got a young man from this community that's playing football at Texas Tech University. He is a center and he is on the Remington watch list of, for the best college center in the country. Rusty Stats. They live over, uh, past the post office. Rusty. Rusty, we know it as the Chumley House, where Mr. and Ms. Chumley live. But Rusty's a great big old boy. He's about six-four and about three-twenty now. I think his dad told me.
And a great boy.
He, and that, that's a good family, but he's, he's a good kid. You don't want him mad, except on the field. But, um, I've seen, you know, when they do the starting lineup, y'all may have seen it too, and it flashes up there and it's got his picture, his weight, his senior class, and then it says Watertown, Tennessee. Now, you think anybody out there in Lubbock, Texas knows where Watertown is? But they will now, 'cause Rusty will tell them.
And when he goes to NFL sometimes?
When he goes to NFL. But I want to say, I won't be here on the seventh. I don't know if it's the smartest thing I've ever done or not, but I'm going to see Rusty play football. I just hope he stays, I hope he stays, uh, healthy. And Rick Martin and I are gonna fly out there and make one of these quick old man trips and hope we survive and, um, come back the next day. But that's just amazing to me. And I go back to, um, I've told this story so many times, but not to some of y'all. When Garth Brooks did his video here in two thousand and one, about three weeks after nine-eleven, he did a video here and it was, song was Wrapped Up in You. And I was in the airport in Chicago, Illinois, when they put that video on the, on the screen there. And at the end, in the credits, it said filmed in Watertown, Tennessee. Now, I had the biggest head in the airport right then. And I thought that was great. And any, any positive press we get, we got young people in school that are competing everywhere, winning state championships and in, uh, academic stuff. And, uh, I, I just think that's wonderful and I think we need to welcome that. That's the kind of publicity you can't buy. So, all right, I'll get off my soapbox. Let's go on. We start with you, Ms. April. I prompted you last time, we would.
And I have nothing.
Well, that's okay. You don't have to apologize for that. You don't have to apologize for that. Cal?
No.
Well, I got a question for you. Those two bad dogs in New York, they're about each that big. Yeah. They're, they're ready. I walked down through there the other night and they let me know.
Oh, yeah.
That wasn't my part of the street.
They're perfectly happy enough.
Yeah.
Just lick it off.
They're not much bigger than that right there. Ms. Laura?
I know there's one thing that I wanted to ask, like you said earlier. Um, the period regarding you used about forty percent of our overtime budget in the police department for a few months. Is that due to your staffing? I'm assuming you took it around and heavily addressed those issues.
Yes, it was. And, you know, even when we, uh, when we went through all the stuff that we did and the folks leaving, uh, it should be in the minutes even that, uh, we said, you know, this could be, this could be costly to start till we get all the stuff, people through FTO, you know, post requires a hundred twenty hours of training. Uh, I mean, it's extensive and that, and that's what's happened for such. And, uh, matter of fact, I put on my last payroll sheet that ninety-five percent, I didn't use that exact number, but the FTO training is over. The guys are out on their own now and some of that'll subside. And one of the other things too, that we have to remember, that I think some of it we get for, it forgets, is we have the THSO grants that I, that I've gotten the city awarded for those. Some of that overtime will be reimbursed from the state of Tennessee as well.
And that'll show up on the revenue side.
That's up on the revenue side.
Yeah. It, it should offset at least some of it.
How are we on our numbers now?
We're back, uh, staffed, uh, so, uh, you know, we're just, it is hard, but, you know, uh, promised, we, there's some things coming down the pipe from the state. And, you know, there's some things the city has said that, you know, at some point about to look at, not necessarily retirement, but something that you can give back, that they can do. So with those kind of promises and stuff, you know, eventually, we'll get to where we can afford that as a community. So we, we have some, uh, good guys right now.
Let me address something else that came up here tonight, uh, from the table and then from the chief. We, um, we don't have dispatchers here. And the reason we don't is because frankly, we can't afford them and keep officers on the road. Our officers are underpaid as it is. We're trying to build that up to where they're making a decent wage. Well, we thought we put some, some pretty decent things in place and I'll, I'll double check that. But if you call nine-one-one, they're gonna, they're gonna page y'all out, aren't they?
Yeah, and that, and that was what we were trying to explain. Even here though, that if, let's say a cell phone don't work or the, the landline don't work, but you call nine-one-one, they hear you, they, it automatically puts it, and if you don't even speak, they send somebody straight to you. And when we're dispatched over the radio, it's a whole lot safer and more, less liability for any, uh, phone call than it is anything. And, you know, again, they, the phones are set up to roll. I mean, if we had a dispatcher here twenty-four hours a day, I mean, that'd be a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year.
But too, y'all very well could've been out on a call at that point in time. But, but they called the office, you know, like-
Yeah.
So that's why if there is an emergency-
But if you go to nine-one-one. Or if you'll dial the sheriff's department number. But if you dial that, 'cause they go, they take, they dispatch our people.
Yes.
But if you call the sheriff's department number, don't listen to the options. Go straight to zero. Go straight to the, to the dispatcher. They've got several options there about talking to the sheriff and talking to the chief deputy and talking to the detective's division and the traffic division. Skip all, don't, don't listen to that. Go straight to zero. And, uh-
It's supposed to run five to six times, but with the technology, it might be four times and go straight to sheriff's department, then it might be seven. But that's not something that we control per se of them. Setting a limit that says, hey, it's this. And, you know, if somebody's there, they'll answer. But even when they answer, we still then have to call a dispatcher. Wilson County, hey, somebody just called and said X, Y, Z, blah, blah, blah. Then they ask us twenty questions and they still have to dispatch the officer. So it takes about a minute out of a situation for just a roll tool and then dispatch. So really, you know, and when you're in a hectic situation, ten seconds is like thirty minutes. Where are you guys been after eating? No, we got here in less than twenty-eight seconds, but it sure don't feel like that.
Let me say too, as, as of Wednesday of this week, Wednesday of last week, Wednesday of last week, the nine-one-one dispatchers, the sheriff's department dispatchers, and the Wilson Emergency Management Agency dispatchers are all in the same communication center in a new center built in the new jail wing. It is state-of-the-art, finest equipment around and good people staffing it. So I think that's gonna help things. Although I, I represent nine-one-one, we get a monthly report and people are responding within anywhere from two-point-six-eight seconds to six seconds once they get the call. They push that button and send it out. And if they say, what's your emergency? And you say, my husband's having a heart attack, they're rolling women. If you, uh, if they say, you know, somebody's breaking in my house and I'm scared, most of the time, they'll roll both of them right then. But it happens quickly, but you gotta get it to them. And if it comes over here, it will slow down the process because we don't have a dispatcher. I'll talk to Al about that. Bottom line, if you've got an emergency, call nine-one-one. Call nine-one-one. When seconds count, is what they say. And they do. Anybody, anybody else got anything around the table? Did I cover everything you stated?
No.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll take that.
Mike, come here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, thank you.
Don't, will we-
Yeah, you go ahead. Yeah, I have, don't say, don't forget, I already had.
Okay, I had this lady call today and she asked if she's in the bathroom on October twenty-fifth at five-thirty, six o'clock to feed the seniors. She said there's fifteen seniors, she would just prepare the food at home and just eat here. She wanted to do it here, since most of the guys started out playing sports with her community leading. And then they could play basketball afterwards. Only time in the building would be to eat and then to clean everything up afterwards. October twenty-fifth? She said the last day was on Thursday. Oh, indeed, it's not, but it's not.
You said seniors, you're talking about seniors in high school? I thought you were talking about senior citizens like me. No, you're talking about-
Senior ballplayers.
Okay.
Day before a football game and that football game happens to be on a Thursday night.
Okay.
So they're, they always feed the seniors. And I think that's the last game, that would be a great idea.
Yes.
Here for part- That's this, whatever. That was her thoughts.
All right, yeah.
I just talked to her.
Okay. Yeah, all right, so I'll entertain a motion and we'll approve it.
I'm second.
I keep making those.
I am.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Sorry.
All right, that's approved. Let me get on the soapbox one more time. Watertown's gonna play eleven Friday night. On paper, it's a mismatch. Last time we played them was nineteen sixty-four. They, they were thirty-point favorites. Ms. Tootsie remembers. They were thirty-point favorites. We beat them nine to seven in the Industrial Bowl. We, we, uh, didn't score an offensive touchdown. We ran a fumble back for a touchdown and then we kicked a field goal, which in Watertown at some point in time, that was unheard of. And we kicked a field goal and I won't tell y'all what was said in the huddle. I wasn't there, but I heard it straight from the horse's mouth. When they came over and said Randy Davenport can kick it, said Skid Williams was the quarterback in, he said, hog said he can kick it. And Brownie said, you tell him he better kick it. And he did. And then we held on for eighteen minutes and won that game. Now, we've had that over their head for fifty-nine years. And now I'm afraid it's gonna slip away Friday night. I hope not. I'm pulling for our guys, but they got an opportunity. It's there. It'll be here next, next year. It's gonna be a home and home. And I know why they did it. It's a gate game. You know, they've, they've got expenses and it'll bring a lot of people in. But, uh, I, I didn't get to go that night. I was nine and a half years old and I cried and my mom wouldn't let me go. But I, but I stuck that, my ear in that transistor radio and listened to it. And I've heard so many stories, I felt like I was there. But you remember, Ms. Tootsie, it was the biggest-
I was there.
You were there?
It was so cold and I didn't have boots.
That's the reason my mom wouldn't let me go.
I'm taking, uh, brown paper bags.
Well?
It was so cold and that felt slouchy.
Well, that's the reason my mom wouldn't let me go, 'cause it was cold. And, uh, it was, but, you know, you stop and think about it. We talked about our community here. Skid Williams was the quarterback. He lived on Silver Street. Randy Davenport kicked a field goal. He lived on Waters. Gary Martin returned a fumble for a touchdown. He lived on Richland Avenue. And Robert Johnson, I believe, played on that team and he lived right over here. His daddy was the mayor. So, I mean, it was, it was a small community taking on the world and we won.
We did.
We, I, I hope you're right, girl. I like your optimism.
Thank you, sir.
Second? You'll make, everybody, all in favor, get up and go home.